Okay, I'd like to call the May 21st, 2025 City Council Meeting to Order. If you're able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I'd like to call the May 21st, 2025 City Council Meeting to Order. If you're able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sonart, here. Vice Mayor Axted, here. Councilmember Askin, here. Councilmember Dohit, here. Councilmember Kessana, here. Mayor Gabriel, here. Councilmember Daniel, present. And Student Representative Tanner, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Council, before we get to the agenda and the consent agenda approval, I would like to bring to your attention the lay down materials. Add item H8, discussion item, scheduling a Board of Adjustment Appeal Hearing. Pleasure of council, Councilmember Sonart. If you're ready. Move for approval of the agenda and consent agenda with the lay down.
Okay, we would like to add in item H8, the discussion of scheduling a Board of Adjustment Appeal Hearing.
Well, we need approval of the agenda and consent agenda with the addition of that.
Okay, we make, ask for approval of the agenda and consent agenda?
With.
With the addition of the item H8.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any additional revisions to the agenda and consent agenda from the council? Would the clerk please read the consent agenda items into the record?
You have approval of minutes, regular meeting of May 7th, 2025, brought to you by the city clerk. You have new business action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. You have introduction of ordinance number 3471-2025, adopting the annual budget salary schedule and employee classification plan for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, and committing $2,850,457 of general fund fund balance for future capital improvements, brought to you by the administration, public hearing scheduled for June 4th, 2025. You have introduction of ordinance number 3472-2025, accepting and appropriating grant funds from the Alaska High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for drug investigation overtime expenditures, brought to you by the administration, public hearing scheduled for June 4th, 2025. You have introduction of ordinance number 3473-2025, accepting and appropriating a grant received through the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals for the Kenai Animal Shelter for attendance at the Alaska Animal Control Association 2025 Training Conference, brought to you by the administration, public hearing scheduled for June 4th, 2025. You have introduction of ordinance number 3474-2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the wastewater, water and sewer and municipal roadway improvements, capital project funds to transfer residual balances from completed projects back to their original funding sources, brought to you by the administration, public hearing scheduled for June 4th, 2025. And you have introduction of ordinance number 3475-2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund legislative department and increasing the purchase order amount to BDO USA PC for the FY 2024 and FY 2025 financial audits, brought to you by the administration, public hearing scheduled for June 4th, 2025, and that is your consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the consent agenda items just read by the clerk? Seeing none, we just back to council, are we going to have a unanimous consent? Or?
Requesting unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mayor. Hearing no objections, are there any objections to unanimous consent? Okay, seeing and hearing no objections, the agenda is approved. We have no scheduled administrative reports. We do have scheduled public comments. First off, we have Dr. Keith Hamilton with the Alaska Christian College to give us an update. Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's good to be back with you another year in the books, and I want to just tell you a 25th anniversary next year. I can't believe that we've been here this long since we planted the Kenai Peninsula's only accredited faith-based college, and you are a part of that. And if you know where we're located, we're just off of Church Coffee Pot Road, also known as K Beach Road, church, coffee and pot, church, coffee and pot. So they're at East Poppy, and I do have a video to show you tonight. It's a new video that gives you a picture of our property, a little bit about our history. So let's watch that together. Welcome to Alaska Christian College. What began just five days after 9/11 has become an amazing ministry here in the Kenai Peninsula. Since our inception, it had over 850 young people walk through our doors, about 90% of those Alaska Indigenous young people. Our campus started with just one building on 10 acres, and today we celebrate 27 different building projects on an entire 30-acre campus, and here's the best news of all, we're debt-free! ACC offers four different degree programs. Our first degree is in professional education, the second behavioral health, the third, of course, Christian ministry, and our final degree is in general education. About half of our students participate in a general education degree. It is a two-year educational opportunity for our students when they come to us from rural Alaska, whether they go back to their homes and villages or to continue on to a four-year education. The buildings that we have built on campus have been built by volunteers over the years, many of them from the lower 48 and from Alaska. Most summers, about 300 people come to our campus, are grateful for each one, and if you do come up, I promise you, you'll have to work during daylight hours. The recent project on our campus has been this amazing athletic center that's been taking years to build, and soon day, we'll have students coming from all over Alaska to join us, to play basketball and enjoy our workout center as well. It's an amazing project that we pray that God will use for its glory, and we're very excited about a new chapel to be built on the campus of Alaska Christian College. It's called the Gloria Chapel, and many people have given through their wills and trust to make sure that there's a dedicated worship space for our campus students. Royal Counseling Center is a ministry also of Alaska Christian College that has been with us since 2003, and we celebrate that 24 hours a day of students having access to the mental health needs they might have, but also about 75% of the people that come are a part of the Kenai Peninsula community. But you know, it's really about students, talk a lot about our buildings and what God has done in miracles over the years, but it's about lives being changed. All these students that have come to us, from rural Alaska and other parts of the state, the lower 48 have experienced the amazing new life that's founded in Jesus Christ. Thank you for your support and for giving to life-changing education. Que'ana te ku. Yeah, so if you've never been to our campus, that's what it looks like today, and gymnasium's getting a lot of use, and so I'm pretty excited for that. I'm going to take you to a PowerPoint presentation, and it'll pop up here. There we go. I'm going to start with our mission statements, to empower Alaska natives to biblically-based higher education and Christian formation to pursue excellence in character learning and service as followers of Christ. That's our mission statements, we've had almost since the beginning. Little history, going back, 2001, we purchased the Ballard property from Central Peninsula Counseling Services on 10 and 1/2 acres with an 8,400 square foot building, including an indoor pool. Some people remember that back in the day. They're off of East Poppy Lane. We opened our first class just five days after 9/11. We had only 22 students that first year from four different states, seven different ethnic groups, but 80% were Alaska Native, and 16 of us were self-supporting staff and faculty who raised support to come to the Kenai and start this. We were just a one-year accredited, not accredited Bible college for these people, but today we are again, 29 and 1/2 acres, 28 different building projects, great aerial picture there. Again, built by volunteers that were debt-free after COVID was over, were able to write off our debt. We've added two 36-bed dorms, three cabins, four good-sized apartment buildings that have been donated to us or we built. New Hope Counseling Center, Peninsula Conference Center, a small chapel, six classroom building, a big shop, an eight-car garage. Now, of course, for Alaskans, we have to have a yurt and athletic center, and this fall, we'll have a full gym and wellness center on deck. Picture our state-of-the-art classroom building with our computer lab, our science lab, and four other classrooms. And here's our conference center, total of 72 beds, mainly where our students will stay, and 150-seat dining room. Many of you have probably been inside of our dining room at one point or the other. This is where our students mainly come from. Those dots represent, of course, places where there's a lot of water, and so wherever a river and the ocean meets is usually where our villages ended up, but also interior as well, southwest, many, many places. You'll see that out of the 48 states down below, some students have shown up as well from Arizona, 14 one year actually from Arizona with us, from the Navajo Tribal Reservation. So we're also out of state. We do today have 53 full-time, part-time volunteer interns and adjunct faculty, and growing our budget from half a million now to $3.3 million this year, investing a lot back into the Kenai Peninsula, Kenai-Soldatna community. We have 888 total students now have attended us since 2001. Of the 253 villages, towns and cities with a zip code in Alaska, we've had students from 102 of those, so almost half of Alaska has come to ACC at some point. 2012 is a big year for us. We were accredited from the Association for Biblical Higher Education. We were authorized by the Alaska Commission on Post-Secondaire Education and the US Department of Education, all to say that we're a legit college, all right? I mentioned our vision too of Alaska Christian College, just to be the premier choice, college of choice for Alaska Native students, so that our graduates will follow and serve Christ within the church and larger society. So a villager, a student who graduates from high school, about 300 Native students graduated this last year, we're hoping that will be their first college of choice. We offer four degrees, behavioral health, Christian ministry, general studies, and prayer pro-education. Now, we just started this fall offering both tech classes in marine motors from Yamaha, and also this fall, we're starting large, major equipment operation using simulators and all the equipment we have in our campus. We do offer a life-changing education for those students who may be able to enter into the workforce, stay on the Kenai Peninsula. You see a lot of them in our community here, or will go off to a four-year college degree. Our highest enrollment was 104, pre-COVID in 2020. We've had a drop since then, we're on the rebound, and we are a very personalized approach. We do intensive, intensive, intensive academic support for academically underprepared students, and our numbers of students who come from rural Alaska do have significantly lower test scores, and so we're doing all we can to bring them up to college rigor. We're not a four-year college like some people think, associates art, like the Community College in Exeter, our best partner. We're not an online college, although during COVID, we had to do online for a little bit. Not a place where anybody can teach there. All of our classes are taught by masters and doctoral-degreed professors. We're not just for Alaska natives. I mentioned we have lower 48, we have folks from our Kenai Peninsula community who also come, who aren't Native, and I always like to say, we're not a cult at the end of Royal Place off of East Poppy Lane, just in case you were concerned. I'll talk about the conference center for a moment. We do offer housing, conference accommodations for May to September. Our students are not in session during the summer, their homes assistance, hunting and fishing, of course. We have the cabins, the dorms, and four different apartment styles with a total of 152 beds, 200-seat conference room, 150 seats and dining, and then we offer some catering. So if you added up KPC and their dorms that aren't being used and our dorms in the summertime, we actually have a fairly large conference center option available for people sleeping. Our New Hope Counseling Center, you saw on the video, offers free professional licensed services to all of our students. We also opened up in 2006 to the community, and about 75%, as mentioned, of the entire workload of about 3,300 client hours last year came through the Kenai Peninsula community. So we do have, of course, a faith-based environment. People can say, I don't want any interest in that, that's completely fine. We offer veterans insurance, private insurance, and the EA program. I know the borough has that, I'm not sure if the city of Kenai has that same EAP program with us. We want to be a part of our community. The Great Neighbor Commitment is our doors are always open to the community. We want to serve the greater Soldatna-Keni community. We also want to offer our facilities, which we do, our staff, staff are working a lot in the community here, and our students to assist in bringing a better life to all who live here. Our students required to do 10 hours of community service each semester, and so you'll see students running around, our white van will pull up, or vans will pull up, and students will be at a lot of different places around town helping out. Look for them. Of course, the big deal this last fall, some of you might have been there for a grand opening for the athletic center, it's a 28,000-square-foot facility. We've got the workout cardio use area coming online this fall, as I mentioned, we have three courts for basketball, we have volleyball, six basketball, or pickup ball courts, and we are open for large community events, and then we built a running and walking track around the whole court, which is really nice, I like to use it a lot. We did that because the city had turned down by vote, building their facility with a walking, running track, so we built it, and now, of course, we have the new online coming facility there at the field house, so they will have a running, walking track there. This is what it looks like, it's still somewhat under construction. In fact, the only thing it's under construction yet to do is that far left corner there, you'll see a big wall, that's where the new lobby will come in for us, a 1,700-square-foot lobby. It'll be attached to the front of the building from there. Yeah, it's going to be a beautiful project, starting June 1st, take us a year to finish it using volunteer and contracted labor. But of course, it's really about students. Here's this year's class, we graduated 11 this year, our highest has been 15 in our lifetime, and then our faculty and staff standing behind there. Everybody's in smiles because they finally finished. And if you're driven by recently, you'll see a new lit sign. We've never been able to put a big sign on the corner because we didn't own the corner, but Poppy Lane Flowers, New Hope Counseling Center, Alaska Christian College got together, and we have this beautiful lit sign out. That's my slideshow presentation, and Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm available for any questions you might have about your Christian college.
Thank you very much for that. Council, do you have any questions for Dr. Hamilton?
No, it's just, it's been amazing over the years to see it grow. I've been there, I remember going there almost 20 years ago and seeing how it's grown and what the work you guys have done there. It's a pretty awesome facility, and that gymnasium, I did get a chance to go peek.
Oh, good, you did peek in it, great, yeah.
Pretty awesome facility, and the whole building, the conference room, all that, I've gone to trainings over there, and it's a beautiful location, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work you do for it.
And it's it for everybody to use, yes, yes.
I remember when you guys bought that property and started from literally ground zero.
Yeah, ground, yeah.
And it's just so cool to see what it is today, although I hate hearing it's been 25 years.
It is, ma'am, yes, yes.
I would have said it was 12 or 13 years ago, but no, congratulations, this is very exciting, and what a wonderful option, opportunity for our native students.
Yeah, we're the only faith-based option they have in the state for an accredited college.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Askin on line here.
Hello.
Hi, so I was in the Ballard house before you bought it.
Ah.
That was a long time ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, congratulations on the success of the college, it's amazing.
Yes, please join us, we'll have some sort of a 25th anniversary party everybody will be invited to this year, yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Hamilton, for presenting, I always look forward to that. I think you've done us pretty much every year for a while now, and we certainly appreciate the updates and look forward to continued success of your campus, sir.
Yeah, thank you for all your support, Mayor, over all these years as well, you and that brother of yours.
Yeah.
A good-looking one, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Which one's the good twin?
Well.
But we don't have to get into that here. Dr. Hamilton, thank you very much, I really appreciated the video, kind of pulls it all together.
It does.
You come, like Brian said, you know, every year and talked about what you've been doing, and I don't know anybody else that could pull off such a grand development like that and be debt-free.
We're pretty excited, we burnt the mortgage, it was a great feeling.
Anything? Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, just a quick question and statement. First of all, this is amazing, it's great that you're here in our community doing this, this is awesome. Question on just how you're recruiting students, how they're finding out about you, and how they, it's only got half Alaska covered, how's that outreach program working out?
Yeah, so it's really expensive to fly out to a single village with four students graduating and pay a thousand dollars round trip, so we have to be really careful on where we go. So we do basketball tournaments that show up for the communities, regional communities, we do that. We do the Bible camps in the summer, so high school Bible camps, there's like three of them that are pretty sustained for native, native young people. We do the college tour as well, not a lot of students show up for that, but the number one way is word of mouth, student to student. I went here, my cousin went here, in fact, we had a sweatshirt one year we gave away that said, "My cousin goes to ACC," because everybody in the village is related, and it was great, we should probably bring it back. So it really has been mostly word of mouth. Students aren't like going online and looking, it really has been, our historical 25 years has brought many of our students to us. And spread the word, again, Kenai Peninsula people can come too.
Thank you much, I might want to come check out your track.
Yes, yes, I get my 5,000 steps before I go to work every morning. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Okay, under scheduled public comments, now we have Lindsay Collins, Morgan Lyons, and Ryan Grimm from the Kenai Peninsula Children's Advocacy Centers.
So Lindsay and I are unable to make it through the director's record, and she's been told.
Okay, thanks. I was counting heads, I knew you couldn't all be here, but.
Sorry, I don't know how many of you know what we are, or what we do, or who we are, but we have been here in Kenai since 2008. We are the, essentially, the entity that heads up the Child Abuse Response Team here. We coordinate law enforcement, the Office of Children's Services, sometimes the Department of Juvenile Justice, the District Attorney's Office, as well as a lot of other agencies. We work with the local tribe, and what our job is to do is bring that whole team together to work with our families that are going through some of the worst possible times that they can be experiencing. We respond to child sex abuse cases, as well as physical and severe neglect cases. And I know you guys have our handouts and stuff like that. We are going through some funding issues in 2019, I don't, like I said, I don't know how familiar a lot of you are with us, 2019 Attorney General Barr actually came and toured the state of Alaska. Overall, there are 19 children's advocacy centers in the state, and he went up to Bethel, saw that we were, that CACs as a whole were severely understaffed, underfunded, we have problems with recruitment and retention, and so awarded a pot of money, about 70-some million dollars in 2019, to the whole United States Children's Advocacy Centers, right? And we were lucky to get some of that funding, but that funding runs out this year. And there was, there was essentially an expiration date on this five-year pot of money, and so that money runs out the end of this fiscal year, which is the end of June, and we are also, we receive grant funding through, our pass-through is the Office of Children's Services, in turn, they receive money from the federal government through funding that way, through VOKA funding, as well as ANDVSA, Victim Services, Domestic Violence Crime Compensation, all that kind of stuff. We receive our funding through there. The Kenai Children's Advocacy Center, we are under the nonprofit umbrella of Haven, South Peninsula Haven House in Homer, so that's why Lindsay is part of it, she's our executive director, we are merely another CAC that Haven House oversees. The Kenai CAC specifically, we handle all the cases within the city of Kenai, within the city of Soldatna, out to Nikiski, all the way down to Nilchik North, and all the way in Hope and Seward. So our office here, which we are located in the Seaman Building actually, and we have been since 2016, we have, that's our geographical area that we cover just out of Kenai, north of, or, excuse me, south of Nilchik to the head of the bay is what the Homer CAC covers. Just here in this, in the Kenai office, we have anywhere from 150 to 200 cases a year. That's just cases, that's not including how many children are on those caseloads, and sometimes we have multiple children come through our doors on one case. So that just kind of gives you an idea of what we do, as far as that goes. We, I, if everybody received a copy of, this is a UCR Uniform Crime Reporting, this is public, unfortunately, they don't have an FY 24 posted, but here in the city of Kenai, if you look at it, you guys had 175 total offenses reported, right? It's ranging from criminal homicide all the way up to motor vehicle theft, right? And I spoke with the chief a little bit to find out where child abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse, and neglect fit into those statistics, and we were unable to kind of determine that. But I will share with you that just in, so far from January 1 to now, Kenai city proper, people that actually live within the city, lemons of Kenai, we've had 16 cases come from just within the city. And just a few statistics, so from 2023, we had 41 cases that actually came from the city of Kenai. That's just what your law enforcement agency is responding to, so it's actually Kenai Police Department responding. We have breakdowns for the Alaska State Troopers, as well as Soldatna Police Department, but starting in 2023, there was 41 cases, in 2024, there was 30 cases, like I said, there were 16 cases just since January 1 for this year, and the breakdown, if that's needed, I can get you a breakdown, that's including, that's sexual abuse, physical abuse, severe neglect, and also witnesses to violence, serious felonies. So that's how many cases, and like I said, each case can have multiple children on the cases. So we also provide, at the Children's Advocacy Center, we have the ability to provide forensic exams for kiddos. We have been, we have a forensic nurse on staff 24/7, where if kids need to come through, they can get a head-to-toe wellness exam. If it's for a case, then they have the ability to document injuries, get the kiddo any kind of medical intervention that they need or anything like that. We also, outside of working our cases and working with law enforcement, working with the District Attorney's Office and OCS, we also provide outreach programs and do prevention within the community, so we have the ability to go into the schools and teach them about safe relationships. We also can do mandatory reporter training. We have some parent support groups, we also have grandparents support groups that we offer through the CAC as far as community outreach and reaching out to. We are seeing a lot of the generations, my grandparents' generation raising great-grandchildren and stuff like that, so we have a support group for people that find themselves in those situations. Our funding, I'll go back to the funding since that's why I'm here, and I know I don't, I have a limited amount of time. a limited amount of time. So like I said before, we are based out of Homer, we're not based out of Homer. Our nonprofit umbrella is out of Homer. In Homer, in their city budget, they have a line item in their general fund that they provide finances or give a pot of money to Haven House to provide. And Haven House also has the domestic violence shelter down there and they do the better's intervention program, but they also have the Children's Advocacy Center down there that they provide for their community. And so they provide Haven House $14,000 every year of unrestricted funds in their general fund to be able to help out with finances. I'm not asking for that amount. I'm not putting an amount on anything. I'm just asking that you guys would consider putting us into your general fund for unrestricted funds because we do provide a service and we do work so close with law enforcement. And I can tell you that in 2023, between 2020 and 2025, there were 179 cases from the city of Kenai. So if you look at it and if you average it out and we have 150 to 200 cases a year, you're looking at Kenai is a quarter of our caseload every year. I know it's kind of a grim statistic, but that's the reality of it. And if we don't have the ability to find funding or diversify our funding, then this resource is, has a high likely probable cause of going away, which is not great because we actually are written into state statute that we, that a kiddo coming through is statutorily required to come through a Children's Advocacy Center. So we actually are written into the state statutes as far as law enforcement has to use us for their investigations. So. And that is all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Lyons? Councilmember Daughtry?
Just a question. Is the state, are you working with the state to help with funding options or?
So you are not my first stop. I've actually talked to the police chief in Saldana. I have talked to our finance director at the city of Saldana. I'm going to be doing something similar for them. I've talked to the Commissioner Cockrell of DPS about getting funding. So it's not, this, you guys aren't my first stop in the train ride. But, and I know that this has probably never been asked before of the city of Kenai. But we, the funding, we, years ago, were, like, we as Children's Advocacy Centers, were actually a line item budget in the state's general fund. And so we didn't have to really worry about trying to find funding. And they removed us from the general fund several years ago. And so that, with that funding going away, that's kind of where every CAC is at. There is just a very small pot of money for all of us to try and essentially buy for, which makes it difficult because we can't be competitive and get quality people who want to do the work and understand the work and are willing to stay in this field because we just can't, we just, we have to worry about getting these kids through the doors. And so I actually, this is my second job. I do, and I have a whole nother full-time job. I, so this takes my days off. And so that's, I mean, we just need people who will come in and do the work. That's kind of where we're at.
Councilmember Kusina.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Morgan, for the work that you guys do.
Oh, of course.
And it's grim but necessary work. And so it's, I don't think it's something that most of us want to do or think about. And so that's especially, that's what makes it especially important, I think. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you. Morgan, I too just want to say thank you, you know, for stepping up to the plate and spearheading this off, you know? Because most people, it is grim, to use that adjective. Most people would not want to spend their off time from their primary job working a project of this nature. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for stepping up to the plate. And I guess my mind is just circling and this is not anything to do with you personally, but I'm still chewing on what you said about this being a state statute that they... And I'm sitting here thinking, well, it needs to be a line item in the general budget. And I can see where the different municipalities, you know, would kick in a little here, kick in a little there, and fill out what you financially need. But if this is state statute, then State of Alaska needs to be funding this. And... I know. So...
Red is what you need. There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've run into this issue on a much smaller scale professionally in my career as a teacher. Being told we had to do something because it's required and yet the funding wasn't there and basically we're told to fundraise. So that's all I will say on that topic. But I know that you are in a very tricky position. And so if there's anything that we can do to help you pursue getting long-term funding from the state, just let us know.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We have Mayor Gabriel on line. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Morgan. I just, forgive me if I missed this, but what is your annual budget?
So between what we're covered under Haven House, like I said, we're covered under Haven House as a nonprofit. And so the, our annual budget is three, I believe it's, give or take, $315,000. And that is for, and we have to meet, I believe it's 15% with in-kind and match, which is called match for grant. And I'm sure you're familiar with grant funding and stuff like that where some require you to have match. And so we're required by our OCS grant to have a 15% match. And the way that we here have the ability to meet that is that CPH allows us or provides us with a forensic nurse on staff and a building where we can do our forensic interviews. We are actually co-located, our forensic site is in the Public Health Building here in Kenai. And so that, and they give that space to us at no cost to us. So that's a huge match for our grant. But the 350, or, excuse me, 315 is between employing an advocate, a manager, and then funding that covers like a bookkeeper and a finance director and pays part of the executive director's salary down here. And then up here, it's to cover a manager's position, two full-time advocates, a part-time advocate, and a part-time administration assistant. I can tell you that there has not been a full-time employee here pretty much since I went back to my other job in last August. So we have a hard time keeping staffing. And then, and part of it's because of funding, but part of it is where people come in and they don't realize what we do. And so they just, they step away and say, "This job's not for me." But our annual budget is 300, between 315 and 350,000. It just depends on how we've spent our grant funding. And honestly, I am not privy to a lot of that financial information, but they keep that pretty tight down in Homer.
Thank you.
So the State of Alaska didn't fund any portion of your basic?
No, so we went last, we went last year and did some, I guess lobbying. It's not, lobbying's not the appropriate word, I would suppose, I suppose. But we went and had several meetings with representatives and the Commissioner of DPS and spoke with people who worked in the Boca office and stuff like that about our funding. And that was to ask for us to be put in the general fund for FY26. So we went a year in advance to kind of front-load what we were looking for because we knew that the money from Attorney General Barr from 2019 had an expiration date on it of this fiscal year. So we went last year and did a lot of meetings and legislation stuff in Juneau and was, the hope was to be put on the budget for FY26.
Are there any further questions? Councilmember Daughtry?
Yeah, it's a very difficult spot to be in. I can't even imagine having to deal with all that. I mean, just the number of jobs that you've listed in there, that's not a, that's a lot of small pieces of pie to spread out pretty thin. I mean, that doesn't even include, you know, rent for buildings and maintenance and all that kind of stuff comes out of that, too. So thank you for the work you're doing with what little compensation I'm sure everybody has to accept to do this. So we'll definitely be discussing this more. Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate it. If anybody has any other questions or anything like that.
Just wanted to thank you for coming and your presentation and the insights. And we are in our budget process right now and it will be part of our discussion. Councilmember Daniel.
Sorry, one quick thing. Do you partner with Lee Shore Center at all or is that totally separate?
So Lee Shore Center, they are the Women's Domestic Violence Shelter Center. We do partner with them when we go out in the community and do prevention work and outreach work, outreach work, excuse me. But we, so we are children-based. They are women, adults. They do house children, right? But we are, we advocate for the children in sex abuse and physical abuse cases. So we don't have any housing or anything like that, but we have the ability to get the kiddos the resources they need through our community partners. We also partner with the tribe. They're a big, we have what's called a multidisciplinary team. And so that consists of the tribe, as well as us, OCS, the District Attorney's Office, every local law enforcement agency, Department of Juvenile Justice, all those. So we do partner with them. It's more of prevention and outreach and stuff like that.
And as a follow-up, thank you for that. I think you have some good partners, which is awesome. And we do appreciate the work you're doing. My only other question is from a funding perspective. You mentioned the city of Homer gives you the line item there. Are there any other funding sources identified that you have committed right now for this upcoming fiscal year?
So we have a grant that we apply for every year.
Okay.
And we have submitted for that. We do receive funding from Boca, which is, Boca is, comes from the state as well. But we, like I said, are, the 2019, that pot of money is going away, which is a national grant. Our core grant is through the Office of Children's Services and that funding is coming in. It is being cut. So. Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. That gets us to item D, scheduled public comments. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Samantha Springer from our chamber.
Hi, guys. So a couple of things coming up that I thought everybody should kind of have on their calendars. Lemonade Day is going to be June 14th, so that'll be both Kenai and Saldana. We got all the flyers out to all the schools and to the Boys and Girls Club. So we're hoping for a good turnout on that. Fourth of July Parade and festivities is coming up before we know it. I know that sounds like it should be further out, but it's not. We are also, I'm working with the Historical Society and a couple of other people. We're, and I've talked to Terry. We're going to do Peggy Arness's 100th Birthday Party at the Kenai Chamber. So we're in the planning process of that and there'll be more to come on that. And then Industry Appreciation Day, they did pick a date for August 23rd. So probably, I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that as well. And I'm happy to announce that we are fully staffed for the summer as of today. Thank goodness. We did partner with the Historical Society as well and did all the interviews together so that we could have the docent position and the visitor service reps cross-trade so that if we ever had any people on vacation or any other issues, because they get paid the same amount, now we will be able to have them go over to the chamber or at the cabins whenever somebody's out or sick. So that's the first time we've done that. And also, it'll make a big difference because the cabins are going to be open six days a week for the first time as well. So I think that's about it without going into crazy details, but yay.
Okay. Any questions for Samantha? Councilmember Daniel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Lemonade Day, very excited. All the kiddos love it. Can you sign up yet online?
Yes.
We tried and couldn't earlier, so that's good.
Oh, yeah. The form should be working now.
Cool. Thank you.
Any further questions? I heard that you're going to have a movie this Friday night.
Yes.
It sounded intriguing. You want to talk about that?
It is the last one until December because we try and do free movie night for the community and not for tourists. So January through May, we always show a free movie night and we've moved it to Fridays. But, so this Friday at 6:00 PM, we'll be showing Wicked. And we got a popcorn machine, so there'll be free popcorn, too. I mean, the popcorn machine was a little bit selfish of us because we just love popcorn, but we're using it for free family movie night and maybe other events.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Marian, you're here, so, okay. Excuse me, that gets us to public hearings. First item is ordinance, let me grab my glasses here real quick. Ordinance number 3470-2025, admitting the official zoning map and land use table by rezoning 28 properties located near the intersection of the Kenai Spur Highway and Wildwood Drive from suburban residential, it's RS, to general commercial, GC, zoning district brought to us by administration. Councilmember Daughtry, you have a statement?
Yes, I was going to recuse myself from ordinance 3470-2025. And then also, at the same time, I'll go ahead and do resolution 2025-32 because of conflicts that I have as ownership in some of these properties.
Okay, and they're sequential, so.
Yes.
So, right. Thank you very much. Pleasure to counsel. Councilmember Sonar?
I move to enact ordinance number 3470-2025.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance 3470-2025? Citizen Daughtry.
Yes. I believe there was, is there going to be a presentation from staff on this? Okay. So on this, the staff report should cover quite a bit of it. But what this was to do is, I do own a large parcel in the middle of these lots. It's already general commercial. And so it's kind of almost, it almost seems like it's a little bit of a spot zoning. So this expands that area to a lot of other properties that are more of a commercial-type property, but that aren't being utilized like that. Some of them of which are already being advertised as for sale as commercial properties, but aren't actual commercially zoned properties. So this kind of cleans some of that up. It also, part of it across the street will clean up a section that's, a lot that's partially commercial, partially not, that was not rezoned when it was replatted. So it's a little bit of a cleanup. This comes to fruition, if you look at the maps in your packet also, it mirrors pretty close to the same as the other side of the highway. So it kind of makes this more of a commercial use area, which is what it's kind of turning into in that area. And hopefully we'll get some of these lots to be able to be used commercially before they're sold as though they are commercial. So I was able to get a lot of support. And I do have a little printout here that shows the lots and which ones had written letters of support from the property owners in your packet. Gives you a visual. The couple lots that aren't, I don't have letters of anything that says they are against it, but they were just difficult to get ahold of. They might be from out of state or hard to get ahold of, but they were sent notification letters to the proper procedures, so to speak. But the ones that are highlighted here, and I can hand these out just so you guys get a visual, it visualizes what all those letters are of support in that packet. So I'll go ahead and hand these out to you also if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Daughtry? I'm going to give those to the clerk so we follow protocol. Any questions?
Questions for maybe administration?
Before we, we'll just open it up, see if there's anybody else from the general public here. No questions for Mr. Daughtry while he was up. So is there any other comments from the general public regarding ordinance 3470-2025? Okay, saying none, that brings it back to council. Any comments, questions on council, from council?
Thank you. I guess my only question is, have we received any letters of, I guess, basically asking us to not rezone this? So, maybe that's a question for Director Buettner or whomever.
City Manager Ubank?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Kessena, vice, through the Vice Mayor. I'm gonna defer to Kevin, but I think if we would have received any public letters of opposition, they would be included in the packet. I don't know what, if any of opposition was presented during the Planning and Zoning Commission's deliberation or not, so I'll defer to Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Ubank, members of council. We did not receive any, anything against or in opposition of the rezone. We did have one citizen who owns a parcel just to the north who did call into our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but we were able to say that their property is not going to be rezoned. And then they had no, no other issues with it and left the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? I guess I have one, one question, unless there's any, somebody online that might. In the, in the rezone, I noticed that there is one parcel on Jourdain Way that is, it's, it's in the middle of, of, of the rezone. It's around, it's crowded on three sides, I guess, and kind of left alone, but it's on the right-of-way. Is that, is that a proper zone for that, that lot that's gonna be left that way?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll defer to Kevin.
Thank you, sir. That, that parcel that you're mentioning, just south of Cook Inlet Drive, was not included in the rezone packet. All of ours, with the exception of the northernmost where Weaver Brothers is, all the rest were to the east of the Kenai Spur Highway. That particular parcel, even though it seems out of place, the property around it had merged, and that one is still a, still used as residential. So, we, we did not touch it at this time because they were not a, a party to this rezone application.
So, it, so it doesn't constitute some kind of a spot zoning or anything like that, then?
We would, going forward, we would not propose anything like this in the future. This one just, since they weren't, since they weren't a party, weren't, they weren't for or against or anything. Ideally, no, we would not have a spot zone like this. This is just more happenstance through history. It just kind of got whittled down to just that parcel.
Mr. Dothitt, we'll give you one more giant chance here.
Just for clarification, this particular rezone didn't, except for the, what is the Weaver Brothers yard on that side of the highway, this isn't changing anything on that side of the highway. Everything in this proposal is on the other side of the highway. It's all on the Wildwood side. That was existing from a previous rezone. This, this current one that's before you now only is properties on the other side of the highway.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Kessena?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we are on Item E2, Resolution 2025-32, declaring a right-of-way for a 60-foot by 156-foot portion of the unnamed road along Wildwood Drive as dedicated on lots 11 and 12, Block 8, Black Gold Estates, 2025 replat, it's plat number K1399, not needed for public purpose and consenting to its vacation, brought to us by administration on behalf of Mr. Dothitt. Pleasure to counsel.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-32.
unanimous. Okay, moved and, and seconded. Are there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-32? Okay. Pardon me? So, if there's no, 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 no public comment, we'll bring it back to council. Council discussion?
I guess I'll go.
Thank you. Question for administration or maybe Director Buettner again. I noticed there wasn't a recommendation, so to speak, from the city on this. I'm wondering if you can maybe shed some light on why there's not a recommendation one way or another on this.
City Manager Ubank?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Kessena, through the Vice Mayor. You know, this one's a little bit difficult, and I think the difficulty in this is, revolves a lot around timing. In, on one hand, I, I feel comfortable in saying that that right-of-way is not needed for a public purpose and likely would never be developed as a frontage road if and when Wildwood Drive is improved. The 60, I also would say that the 60-foot extension of utilities and access that that right-of-way is gonna require is likely a potential deterrent to development of those lots along Wildwood Drive. What it's difficult to say is that, you know, it's difficult to say at this time that we have no need for it as a public purpose when we're still in dispute over underlying right-of-way of Wildwood Drive. And we're actively engaged with both KNA, Kenai Native Association, and the State of Alaska in trying to resolve that situation so that we, and potentially can get Wildwood Drive improved. So, I, I wanna, I didn't come out with a hard recommendation because I wanted to present to council, you know, both the pros and cons of, of potential vacation. For me, it's just not the, the best timing until we're able to, you know, resolve Wildwood Drive, a situation I think we're closer than we have been in a long time and actively continuing to work on with both KNA and State of Alaska.
Mayor Gabriel?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the timing of this as well. The city manager and I, we went to Juneau a couple of months ago, and the, the main purpose of that trip was to see if we could garner some funding and interest by the state to, you know, we, we know that Wildwood Drive serves the prison, which is a state facility. And the whole idea was to, you know, maybe bring them into the conversation or the loop and have them, you know, provide some funding to upgrade the road. We all know that this is our, our number-one priority road that needs to be fixed. It's expensive. And I think at this time, by vacating right-of-way and, and saying that it's not needed for a public purpose somewhat muddies those waters. So, I know, I know there was a vacation done on the front part of this fairly recently, but even looking back at then, I probably would have been opposed, looking at where we are now, to just try to work out with the state and also with KNA on, on, not on an ownership issue, but at least pulling them in to help get this worked on. We don't know if that is or isn't, in my opinion, either for a public purpose. It may, it may be, it may not be. But at this time, I think, like I said, it just, it, it muddies the water, in my opinion, at least for drawing the, the state in and getting them to help out. So, I'll be opposed at, at this time.
Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I do remember we did a, I was on council, we did a vacate on the property in the front. And I think we'd be setting a, a dangerous precedent if we said, yes, we'll vacate some but not the rest and discourage potential investment in those properties down there. If you look at the plot, you'll see this front's been vacated, you'll see the lots behind it are vacated. I guess I don't see the difference if we, I, I guess to me, it makes more sense to vacate those so you have a contiguous lot for the, for the landowners to work on instead of saying, no, you can have this, but you can't have that, even though we've already committed to yes. So, I don't think that's a good precedent. As a council, you want to make sure we're friendly for business. We've already vacated the front. I, I don't see what waiting's gonna do because we're always going to, with, with Wildwood Drive, because we're not gonna turn it into a road. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. So, I'd be supportive of vacating this, this, this land here for the landowners to develop.
Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Naxted. It just seems to me that this request is just a little bit premature. I absolutely support small businesses, and we need more entrepreneurs like Councilmember Dothitt here. However, having said that, just knowing that the ownership of Wildwood Drive has not yet been settled, and yet the City of Kenai, we've been maintaining that road with Band-Aids, so to speak. We snowplow it, and, and yet, it's not officially ours. The state, even though Mayor Gabriel and, and city manager went to Juneau to try to get funds, the state is, I think, reluctant to put their foot forward and, and to put the money out until we get this issue settled of who actually owns Wildwood Drive. And until that's settled, I don't think we can actually say with any 100% clarity and certainty that we don't need this 60-foot right-of-way. We don't need it for any public purpose. We can vacate it. And if we vacate it now, personally, I think we need to do it for every single private property owner down Wildwood Drive. And we just can't do that at this time until the issue of who owns the road is settled. The other timing issue I have with this is, is with Councilmember Dothitt actually being a council member. Because to me, this muddies the water. Because if we were to vote to vacate this land to him tonight, I guarantee you that tomorrow morning's headlines would not read, would not read, "City takes unnecessary land and vacates it to business owner." The headline would read, "Kenai City Council Votes to Give Free Land to One of Its Own Council Members." And to me, that appearance definitely muddies the water. Am I opposed to this? No. I'm just, I'm opposed to the timing of this. I just think it's a, just a little bit premature.
Councilmember Askin?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I echo the sentiments of both Councilmembers Sonar and Gabriel. I think we're premature. I think that it, it doesn't appear appropriate. And the whole question of ownership is, that's huge. We, we've been at this for several years, and if we vacate those front two lots, what if we do have some sort of an expansion? What if, how is that gonna affect the rest of the private citizens that own property on that street? So, I'm gonna be a no for this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Dothitt, you're, yeah, it's council discussion now, so. Absolutely. I, I tend to decide with, or agree with the administration and the mayor and others, you know, because of the, the timing on this, as far as the, the right-of-way. When we vacated the right-of-way before, a little section of it, it wasn't, it wasn't an issue, or we didn't know it was an issue with the right-of-way at that time. And, and also, part of it was already either vacated or not part of that right-of-way anyway, that 60 feet, that it didn't exist out to the highway. There was, it was chunked in. But, and also, my reading of the applicant, it, you know, didn't show a, an absolute need for that 60, additional property also, for the development. Obviously, more land would be good, but I didn't see that there was a, a need. But I think primarily because of the, the timing with the state and the Kenai Native Association and where we're at with that, now's not the, the time to be, to be casting off some right-of-way that we could possibly use. And I don't, I don't, like the city manager, I don't expect that we would. But I, I think it, it, it has another appearance, too, that we don't want to do if we're trying to negotiate. So, I'll be a no on this. Because, Sonar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Naxted. I have a question for Councilmember Dothitt. If this land were vacated tonight, how would that help you business-wise? What would you be able to do with it business-wise that you cannot do right now?
So, right now, the reason, and I know it was brought up, this, this vacate hasn't been done in the last few minutes. This has been a four-year process because I had to acquire the lots, and it's been going on for over four years. I've been working on this. And it was 210 feet that was vacated by this council previously, right next to this. The reason this has come to my attention is that in this last flooding we had, and why it has come to my fruition to need, the, the need for this property was one, for me to develop the property off of Wildwood Drive that is abutting those, I would have to expand an extra 60 feet of driveway, 60 feet of utilities. And all of those things are, cost a lot of extra money just to access the property to, if I wanted to develop some of these. But also, this road right-of-way now is where all the, all of Wildwood drains to my property. And it causes a huge lake. It's a horrible drainage mess. Wildwood drains, the highway drains. And so, I had over two and a half foot of standing water in that corner where the road right-of-way is. I've added drainage ditches and everything else. So, the purpose of this road right-of-way, by vacating it, was for me to expand that, clear off the three or four feet of overburden that's on it, that basically adds as a dam to allow more runoff to my area so I don't have those flooding issues and try to help prevent that flooding issue. That's what this was about. I'm not putting up, planning on putting a structure up there right this second, but it was to expand and help with water drainage and some of the issues that are becoming about that. This body, you know, when I went through it, the borough had no problems with it. Planning and zoning was okay with it. It's already been done and vacated 210 feet of it, and any other property owner along there can do that. The city's not, what I was told, the city wasn't gonna basically pay to vacate every single person's property at once. They could apply for it, each individual property owner along there. But it's several thousand dollars from what, to, to get this rezoned, replatted, go through the borough process and, and get it to this point. For a road that goes nowhere, that dead ends, has no purpose and was already, by this body, adjoining 210 feet of it, was said to have no purpose and is, and not needed for a public purpose just a couple of years ago. And this has been taking me three, almost four years, to buy the adjoining properties, to make that into one property, to continue to work down that and clean this whole area up. So, to say that we're gonna develop a lot, a utility road that dead ends on both sides and is only 60 feet wide and so the 120, which is the adjoining, seems a little bit unrealistic. And it's not a question of whether the city currently has this, this 60-foot a right-of-way. It's the adjoining other 60 feet, or 120 feet, I believe, which is Wildwood, which is where it's, which in question. This is, this section isn't in question of who's currently has the right to use it. But that's the purpose behind this and where it started from. And like I said, it was already, 210 feet was done just a couple of years ago. It was said it wasn't needed for a public purpose. I purchased the lots next to it, figured I could just, even the, the surveyor says, oh, this seems like a pretty slam dunk, fairly simple, they've already made their decision once. And now to have this come up here, because it happens to correlate with when we're still talking with negotiations that have been going on for over 20 years, I didn't know that this was gonna be a, a needed for a public purpose to a dead-end road to nowhere. So, that's all I have on that.
Go ahead.
Just a process question. So, if I understand this correctly, the, the borough planning department, through their planning commission, has sent this recommendation through. The city, through this body, has really kind of three options to vote in favor of vacating, vote as opposed, or remain silent, which equals vacate. Is that, do I have that correct?
or remain silent, which equals vacate. Is that, do I have that correct?
City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kessina, yeah, I think your synopsis is correct. I just want to clarify a couple of things. When the vacation and this preliminary plat came before our Planning and Zoning Commission, their recommendation was approval of the preliminary plat conditioned on council's vacation of this right-of-way. So they are not taking a position on whether or not that vacation should take place. I believe that's the same position that the Borough Planning Commission takes when it views this as well, that they are saying they approve this, but it's still conditioned upon either the city vacating, or if you choose not to take action, then it would automatically vacate, or to oppose the vacation.
Thank you.
I do have a question for the City Manager. In my understanding is that the right-of-way wasn't going to be used for building. It was going to be for more like grading, and because of some ponding and whatnot. Would city right-of-way, could that, could somebody ask for a permit to, for doing some grading in a city right-of-way, in the 60-foot zone, so there's no flooding, and so long as it doesn't impact any city facilities? Do we do that? Did you follow that?
Yeah, thank you.
That way, Mr. Dothett would be able to achieve what he was trying to do with the grading away from his property that he has.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, I think that's a really good question. I know that we could not permit any structures to be constructed in a right-of-way, but I might look to the City Attorney if he has any insider experience on that one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nexted. I think that's sort of a complicated issue, in the fact that the city owns right-of-ways in trust for the public for traveling on those right-of-ways. So I don't know, I mean, we issue permits for people to do things in the right-of-way, but as far as permanently altering them or impeding other people's ability to use that right-of-way, even if it's not developed, I think the public has a right to reasonable use of the right-of-way. So it would, I can't envision what a drainage gallery might, or I don't know exactly what type of improvements would need to be made, but I don't, I don't think you could, if the city owns it, that we can necessarily make it more difficult for others to use.
Okay, thank you. And I guess it's a hypothetical question that really can't be answered without a plan, but it sounds like it could be possible, depending on what it is, if it doesn't impede traffic and other things. So is there any further council discussions? Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nexted. Question from administration. What, how do I word this? What exactly is our concern with the disputes if we vacate? Could you elaborate there for us, please?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Daniel, through the Vice Mayor. You know, I think my concern at this point is just, one, making a statement, just an outstatement, that this is not needed for a public purpose when we're in dispute on the adjacent roadway for underlying right-of-way. Two, as far as where we are right now in negotiations, you know, I've had preliminary conversations with KNA, Kenai Native Association, regarding them providing the city access to the right-of-way. We don't dispute that the right-of-way under Wildwood Drive is of ownership of KNA. We're just, we've had preliminary discussions about them providing us the rights to utilize it. And we're also, I think, you know, working very cooperatively right now with state DOT on potentially getting Wildwood, their participation in Wildwood Drive repaving. And I don't want to send any mixed messages or confuse any of those matters with potential vacation of an adjacent right-of-way, when, you know, I haven't, you know, I haven't brought to council yet any of the, you know, potential agreements for access to the Wildwood Drive one, but I think those would all be contingent upon eventual state funding. So, you know, I'm just being overly cautious, because I feel like we're closer than we've ever been before to actually resolving, you know, and getting, you know, what was labeled in, I think, 2011 as the city's worst road, and we're, what, 14 years later, potentially getting that repaved in the next year or two.
So I'm understanding clearly, the dispute is really Wildwood Drive. It's not the right-of-way per se. It's the access, using the right-of-way to Wildwood Drive, or just Wildwood Drive? I'm trying to understand where we're, how vacating impacts this project, one way or another, from the state's perspective and from KNA's perspective. I guess if that makes sense, what I'm asking.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I don't know that I can answer your question totally. I can tell you that there is 120-foot right-of-way that is under, that KNA, Kenai Native Association, received as part of its land entitlement, that they have ownership to, that is under Wildwood Drive. There is an adjacent 60-foot right-of-way to the east of Wildwood Drive that is right-of-way that the city of Kenai owns. How it specifically could impact, you know, our discussions with KNA or the state, I think there's a myriad of answers for that. I don't, I can't tell you all the hypotheticals. I just am really concerned about the timing, and I'm not trying to, I don't want to disrupt the progress that we've made in the last six months on potentially getting that road taken care of. So yes, you could characterize, my position is being overly cautious, but I'm just doing my best to try to get that road improved, and I don't want to screw anything up right now.
Any further comments, questions?
I was just, thank you, Vice Mayor Nexted. I was just going to answer, Councilmember Dothett's question. Yep, sorry, thank you. So KNA got allotment of land from the state through ANXHA, and say hypothetically, it was 1,000 acres. Well, their claim is that they weren't really given 1,000 acres, because X amount of those acres is what encompasses Wildwood Drive. So they still want to be compensated for it. I don't think they necessarily have a problem with the city, but they don't want to give up that land until they're either compensated monetarily for it, or the state gives them more land, because they were promised X amount of acres, and their position is, they didn't get all that acreage, because part of it was encompassed by Wildwood Drive. And I think our past efforts to develop Wildwood Drive, at least outside of the existing right-of-way, have been hampered, because KNA wants to be compensated prior to giving up rights to that land.
Thank you. I think that makes sense. I think I'm following. Wildwood Drive is the issue, but it doesn't sound like that right-of-way is part of it. Is that, or is it part of it? I'm just not understanding.
So that right-of-way is certainly separate from Wildwood Drive. I think KNA would argue that Wildwood Drive is not a city-owned right-of-way. They might argue that we have the right, at least I would certainly argue, that we have the right to, at least to continue to maintain what we have historically maintained. But when it comes to us, say, if we wanted to do a road project that expanded the width of the right-of-way beyond what we currently maintain, I don't think that they would be supportive of us doing that without compensation. Their argument is that that's their land, that they were promised by the state of Alaska through their allotment through ANXHA. Here, Gabriel, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, part of what goes on with these type of scenarios is, things can be a little bit fluid, as far as negotiations and how that works. I know there's, you know, just with my experience with DOT, we did several pavement trades. So we did the work with, you know, to upgrade the road, pave it, and then would, you know, trade it with another facility, but help with our operations. Those are just some of the avenues that can happen with how these negotiations work, because the state's going to work, look at it, from, especially DOT, from the perspective of what can they do to better, you know, their operations for their side. So there's, there might be, I guess my point here is, there could be unforeseen aspects to this. My problem, or that's not a problem, I got a lot of problems, but this is, one I would say is this concern is more than a problem, is the timing of this, as we try to work through those negotiations, and at the same time saying, "Okay, we've got this adjacent right-of-way that we're vacating, because we're saying it's not needed for a public purpose," when, you know, it very well, you know, at some point, could be, if, to the point that Mr. Dothett just made, that I was unaware of, is that that drains the entire section of Wildwood Drive. Well, if that's the case, then maybe there's something that, as the state would do some design and engineering, if that was the case, would look at that and say, "Well, we would need this to address drainage issues that are further up the road." The whole point to why, I guess what I'm saying is, there's a lot of elements to this that are somewhat fluid, as far as the negotiation process goes. So from my perspective, it just concerns me with, when we're trying to put all this effort into upgrading that road, or having some sort of resolution to getting that road fixed.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniel?
So, do we have any idea on the timeline of this, like, when we could have some clarity, if that's what our holdup is, or is it, what are our thoughts, especially for administration?
City Manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Daniel, nothing I can give you that is concrete. I know Public Works Director Frye met with some DOT folks on the phone today, and furthered some discussions about potential paths forward. And we're looking to potentially have some design features changed in our current design. And so I don't know how specific I can be. Like the mayor said, it's kind of fluid at this point. My hope is that by this fall, we potentially could have it repaved, or at least be on a path likely to paving next summer. And I think we'll know that in the next three to six months. But again, it's, you know, the state's working very cooperatively with us right now. And, but I don't have a definitive timeline. I wish I did.
And a follow-up for Mr. Dothett out there. I understand the summary season is short. I don't know if there's, from a timeline perspective, how much time you need, or what your thoughts were, if we could work something out there.
Well, I mean, that was brought up when this was first introduced, and I did delay it voluntarily a month, the whole process, knowing this could take a while to get through there, and for development before this fall. As far as timing goes, I would love to be skeptical that, I hate to be a little skeptical on if this is going to happen or not, but, you know, when I bought this property four years ago, I was told it's getting paved next year. It's getting paved next year. It's getting paved next year, and it still hasn't. I would love to see it get done. I've just been moving forward with business as I can, doing what I can with what I have. It took four years of buying each individual lot, working with the borough, waiting for it to go auction, and the timeline was not meant to be a hindrance on this. It's just how it fell into place to work for me, and it was, the timing for me to be able to get it done this fall, I don't know. If we don't even have enough resolution before winter, it's most likely not going to happen this year, is what it looks like. So contracts are already booking months out. I was hoping to be doing it this fall, but it wasn't an, intended to be a timeline issue. I tried to delay it as long as I could to get it through the process. Again, I had no idea when I started this process, how it could be a hindrance, or even assumed it would be a hindrance, because of the precedence that was already set by this body a couple of years ago, with another 210 feet that was already vacated. So as far as being able to do it, I don't know. I don't know how much longer I can delay it to get it done this year, because I think, and it could be clarified with staff, I believe there's a timeline for the borough's authorization of when this has to be decided on. That's why it had to go to this meeting. And then it has to go back through everything again, if we do it again, if I'm figuring it out right.
Mr. Dothett, if I could ask you a question. I mean, it's kind of getting beyond the right-of-way issue, really, but that's what you're talking about, is your timing. And I think you just gave testimony that you weren't going to use the right-of-way, except for some drainage issues. You were going to cross it, so the utilities are going to cross that anyway. I fail to understand, you know, from your perspective, and that's what I'm asking, is having that right-of-way or not, doesn't appear to be part of your plant, your development plan for your property. I think you had some buildings planned, but I don't understand the connection between the right-of-way that you weren't going to build on, anyway, and your development plan, why that would delay you.
It's going to delay the ability for me to help. A, one of the right-of-way issues was the drainage issue, because that was alarming this year. Two, if I did want to build something over there, say, in the future, I'm not going to be able to without crossing that right-of-way. So I'm going to have to put a driveway across the road right-of-way, which is an extra 60 feet, pull utilities across the right-of-way, an extra 60 feet, just to the edge of the property that I have now, before I could develop. I'm not going to go into a bunch of detail what I hoped and dreams and ambitions for that property were, but yeah, there was ideas. That's why part of this also is combining those four lots into one lot. And that's other part. It's not just the road right of vacate. Again, whether I'm on council or not, I'm still operating a business. This wasn't meant to be looked dirty for, "Ooh, that dirty council member's trying to get land." No, this is a property owner developing land, like any other property owner would have the right to do along this, when it comes to developing a right-of-way. Any other property owner could ask along that same minds to do the same thing, and it happens all the time in the city, people to vacate right-of-ways. And again, it was before I was on council, right before I was on council, I went through the same process. 210 feet by this body was already vacated. That's why it came up. It was just a long-term plan that I've been working on, developing the business. So as far as what I'm going to do, I don't know. Obviously, I can't really do anything if it's a road right-of-way. And as your concern of, well, I could just get a permit, I'm not going to dump 30, 40, 50 grand to do a bunch of dirt work into something I don't own. It doesn't make a lot of logical sense. So, anyway.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
Councilmember Kessina?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
No.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
No.
Vice Mayor Nexted?
No.
Assistant Representative Tanner?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. For Councilmember Dothett to get back up. Next, we have item E3, Resolution 2025-33, authorizing award of the city-owned lands appraisal contract brought to us by administration, pleasure of council. Councilmember Sonar?
I move to enact Resolution Number 2025-33.
Second, unanimous.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-33? Seeing no one, bring it, this brings it back to council. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Dothett?
All right. So I know from our previous meeting, there was some conversation about what people wanted to see to make this come to fruition. I did draft up a couple of amendments.
I think this is the appraisal.
Oh, I'm jumping ahead. Another land issue. I got confused. I'm sorry. I have no comments on this one. I was flustered, sorry.
I was flustered, sorry.
Manager might want to give us a briefing on this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. So as council is probably aware, we have a number of land leases at the city that require appraisals of the parcels on years ending in zero and five, and then adjustments are made to the leased value based upon the new appraised value. Some of our leases are based on 6% of the appraised value, others are based on 8% of the appraised value. But there's a number of leases that require us to do appraisals on years ending in zero and five. So this is to get those properties appraised for adjustment to their rates effective July 1 of 2025.
Okay, any questions from council for the city manager? Any comments, questions? Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections? Seeing none, Resolution 2025-33 is adopted. That brings us to item E4, Resolution 2025-34, authorizing the city manager enter in an agreement for janitorial services at the Kenai Municipal Airport Terminal brought to us by administration, pleasure of council. Councilmember Sonar?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-34.
Second unanimous.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-34? Seeing no one, that brings us back to council, discussion from council. Seeing no hands up. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objections to unanimous consent? Okay, seeing none. Resolution 2025-34 is adopted. So that brings us down to item G, unfinished business. A public hearing was postponed. Ordinance Number 3469-2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code 1.85060, conflicts of interest prohibited to allow municipal officers and city employees to participate in certain sales open to the public through the public process and narrowing the existing prohibition on purchases to personal property items. By Dothett, on May 7, 25, this item was postponed to tonight, May 21, 2025, and we have a substitute So basically, it's still on the floor, and it would be probably the appropriate time to move the substitute.
I will move the substitute. That's a new word we haven't used yet. Ordinance 3469-2025.
Second.
And I had my mic off. Hopefully, I was loud enough. Anyway, so that brings us back to council. Councilmember Dothett, go ahead.
Okay, now I'm in the right order. So due to our previous discussions, I did come up with a couple amendments from what I got a feel from the room, what people had talked about. I did a couple of different options. So the first one I wrote up was, what came to fruition was that municipal officers may not submit bids, proposals, or otherwise purchase property from the city. That was what we had talked about, I believe, earlier. I do have copies of this, I could pass out if people wanted to look at it. For this amendment, it would still allow, what this amendment would do was still allow city employees, not the municipal officers, which we discussed was planning and zoning, this body, and then the city manager, city attorney, and the clerk, I believe, would not be able to participate. But it would still allow city employees to be able to participate in land sales. And also, and that's what this first one is. I don't know if anybody wants to look at it. I do have copies of it here. Should I make a motion to move this as a first? Okay, so I will make a motion to make that amendment that I have here.
So maybe I can, sorry, Vice, yep, Vice Mayor Axted and Councilmember Dothett. So I think what Vice Mayor Dothett is asking for is to amend a particular section of the ordinance. So if you could talk about what section of the ordinance you want to amend and how you want to amend it by including a final sentence, a last sentence to that.
Yes, I guess I would make more clarification on that. Go ahead. Just for other clarification, I see a number of examples here. What page are we on?
What page in the document are we?
So this would be an I. I don't have a page in front of me, I just have the amendments.
Okay.
Subsection, so it's in section I.
I seem to be having troubles finding the substitute, actually, going back and forth here. 009? Thank you. Thank you.
So in that, are we on, find out where we're at? So anyway, on that, under subsection I, it would add, the last line would be added, municipal officers may not submit bids, proposals, or otherwise purchase real property from the city. So everybody find that, where that would be added in section I?
Okay, that's your motion?
That would be the addition for that subsection I. Yeah, I think it might make sense if it's. Figure it was easier instead of.
Okay, we have a motion, and we need a second.
Second unanimous consent.
Any objections to unanimous consent to, pardon me, ordinance 3469-2025 is amended?
I'm sorry, did we get a second for this amendment, the amendment?
Oh, Brian, Mayor Gabriel seconded it.
All right, thank you.
And requested unanimous consent. Is there any objections? Okay, seeing none, ordinance 3469-25, substitute is amended. Councilmember Dothett, do you have something else?
No, I just, now we can discuss the amendment, correct? Yes.
Now we can discuss the substitute as amended.
Okay.
Just a point order, Vice Mayor Axted, I don't know if you wanted to reopen for public comment, and if there's anybody online that wanted to, or there that wanted to comment on it from the public.
Certainly, I can do that. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance 3469-2025, substitute is amended? Have no takers. So that brings us back to council. Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Axted. Okay, so I'm looking at I, and I'm looking at the amended substitute, and the amended sentence reads, municipal officers may not submit bids, proposals, or otherwise purchase real property from the city. Okay, municipal officers, obviously, that's us. How do we know, how do we clarify that that also includes planning and zoning commissioners and the three council employees?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Axted, Councilmember Sonar.
So it's defined in that section of code, there is a definition section, and it defines municipal officers as the city council, the planning and zoning commission, the city attorney, city manager, and city clerk.
Okay, and then what about the planning and zoning department?
They are not considered municipal officers. They would be municipal employees for purposes of this section of code. However, most likely, they would, at least the planner, would be unable to participate in the purchase of any property because any sale would be generated by the planning department, or at least the sale process would be. So I find it would be, I can't really envision a time when the city planner could purchase property from the city, because the planner is always making recommendations on what property is available, and he would have information that the general public would not have. There could be though, some of his staff that may not be involved, maybe they just do code enforcement.
Mr. Bloom, just kind of following up on that, the term arm's length was removed from the whereas, as it was in there a couple of places, and I was starting to get comfortable with what that meant, but it's gone now. And so our planner can't do it, but he's got a staff, and there's other people that are around him. And so if, it would seem like the idea of arm's reach or arm's length still applies, whether it's not in the whereas's or not. So just wondering who else might not be able to bid on it other than the planner upstairs.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Axted. The people that would not be able to bid on property would be city municipal officials and any employee that is in a position to obtain information not available to the general public with regard to the property itself or process of sale. So any employee, whether it's somebody in my office, Terry's, somebody in Terry's office, somebody in the planning department, somebody in the clerk's office, if they were involved in the process of sale, or if they had information about the property that wasn't available to the general public, then they would be prohibited from bidding on it.
Councilmember Kessina?
I asked this question last time, and I guess maybe it's more relevant now. How would we intend to enforce that administratively, to determine who does and does not have information that's not available? And how would you prevent somebody from, let's say, calling your friend that works in another department and asking that question? And would that constitute additional information that the public would not have?
Sure. So, thank you, Councilmember Kessina, Vice Mayor Axted. So we internally discussed this when we just had our land sale. I know there were some employees that were interested in purchasing the property, and we talked about it with them. And even without this provision of code, we felt like there were ethical barriers to it. And so I think you have to have a little bit of faith in us to self-police. You know, I think when we, when the city manager and I sort of discussed this initially and went back and looked at the legislative history, we had an understanding that it was based on, you know, maybe an employee who had special knowledge about something during the city's surplus auction. And, you know, we talked about, well, maybe we don't need to make a law to address this because that employee just did something wrong anyway, and he should be fired. Ethics is really hard to legislate and make rules about, because there's always shades of this and that. You know, people can go to great lengths. You know, when we, it's very common in ethics that a conflict is not just for you as a council member, but also your wife or other people that live with you. Well, if you really wanted to, you could potentially get your neighbor or your cousin, that's not specifically mentioned, but I think we know when something doesn't feel right. And that's, like I said, ethics is really hard to legislate and make rules on, because there's, depends on how far people want to go to get away from them. But we would have to, as a city, as a city manager, you know, self-regulate and let employees know that, A, trust employees to come forward and act appropriately.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Dothett?
I just want to say, I think this would be a good thing for our benefit to our employees that we can offer, to allow our employees that I, for one, would think would trust them to be able to do this in a respectable manner, to allow them to purchase property. I mean, these are the people that I would like to see developing and building within the city, and this gives them an option to do that at a reasonable rate and a reasonable price. And so I hope we can, we've discussed this quite a bit, and I hope we've made some tweaks to it, to everybody feels comfortable with it, and I hope we can move forward with this.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to say that I appreciate Councilmember Dothett's work on the amendment. I fully support this as amended, and hope everybody else does too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I'm still a little bit on the fence personally. I think we've got a, we've got a code that's set into place, not because we don't, we certainly trust our administration and all that and the self-policing, but what it does is it kind of eliminates that burden on the administration to show that information didn't get out, we don't have an employee that had, probably has every opportunity to get additional information beyond what the public generally might be able to have. I mean, having worked here, and, you know, the planner is just a phone call away, or maybe a few steps or something like that, some information. I think it raises the possibility for public scrutiny. And that's why I believe that the code is the way it is. So hopefully, we have some additional discussion here, because I'm not completely sold on it, although I do appreciate the amendment that Mr. Dothett put in here, and that makes it more palatable. But I'm, at the moment, if I'm having a difficult time with it, I'm going to probably vote against it unless I can be convinced otherwise.
Councilmember Kessina?
Yeah, I think I might echo that comment. I certainly feel better about it now that it's for municipal employees. There's a part of me that still feels uncomfortable with approving it and repealing the code that we already had in place, especially working for a place that does have public auctions, that despite best efforts maybe doesn't always pass the moral test. And to the point made, I think it's hard to police morality, and sometimes I don't think people see it as a moral choice to reach out and ask their friend, hey, is this thing good or not? You know, you don't consider that maybe a moral choice to make from time to time. And so I guess, talk me into it, I guess is what I'm looking for, because I'm having a difficult time with it, and I'm also leaning towards no for that reason. I think there's still probably enough yeses either way, but that's where I'm at, and so feel free to talk me into it.
Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll take that challenge. You know, at the end of the day, if we can't trust our people to make the right choice, we have bigger problems, I believe, than a land sale. I'll see to that.
And I would just like to reiterate that all of these things you've talked about are, you know, I've heard mentioned, oh, we talked about, oh, we can call the planner and ask. Well, so can anybody in the public. We're not saying that they're going to do something intentional, but anybody, whether they're an employee or not, has the ability to possibly do something that might be unethical or something. We have to take into account that we're allowing them to do ethical things here and that they're going to take the best road. Joe Blow's cousin could know an employee who talked to an employee under the table or something. I mean, we can come up with conspiracy theories all day long, but in the end, what we're trying to do is give our employees the option to develop within our city. We're giving them the option to say, hey, I work for the city of Kenai, I want to live here in the city of Kenai, the city's got some good land that I would love to build a house on and develop within my city that I'm showing support for, let's let them do it. That's where I'm at. I'm not looking at this as trying to be like a dark, scary thing, or somebody's cousin's aunt's uncle might say. I'm just looking at this as a benefit to the city employees. I trust, for one, our city employees. We have good people working here, and if they are found to not do something right, then they would be terminated. I mean, that would be an unethical thing. I think if we found somebody that was working and was discovered to have done something unethical, I would hope that they would either be, you know, terminated or reprimanded
terminated or reprimanded in some way. And I have faith in our staff to be able to figure that out if they did. And this comes down to a benefit for our city employees. That gives them something that's not unheard of in many other communities, including at the borough level, that they are allowed to purchase property at an outcry auction. And if they're willing to come do their due diligence, come to an auction that's live and in public and say, you know, I'll bid $20,000 on a piece of property, and somebody in Rosillo is only willing to go to $19,000, and they win the property and they want to build a house on it, great. Because we've given our city employees that option to do it. But at the same time, they still have to be willing to pay more than somebody who, who isn't willing to pay more. They're still going to have to come to an outcry. It's going to be out to the public. We're not talking backdoor deals or they're planning a secret spy mission or something here. We're just at an outcry auction. Hey, I want to, I want to buy a piece of property. Look, that looks like a great product for a house. Hey, I happen to work for the Roads Department at the city. Hey, I'm going to come and bid on that so I can build a house for my family. And I think that's something we should allow our employees and show trust and faith within them that they're going to do the right things. And I think we can. I think we have a good team here, and we have a great administrative staff that would be there to police it. And I think we can make this happen and show a benefit to our citizens.
We're going to continue with council comments, and I see that we have a hand up from Jeff Twate. So we'll catch him toward the end. Right now, we have Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, I think we're sort of maybe making a little bit of a mountain out of a molehill here. Because when you look at property, real property, you know, we're talking about, let's say, a dozen lots that go up for auction. And, you know, if somebody's, you know, that, that's not an, that wouldn't be eligible employee to bid on that, it's, you know, I doubt this would be a speculation thing. So sooner or later, someone's going to build a house there. So it sort of seems like they're, you know, self-reporting if all of a sudden there's a house built and they're living in it. You know, it's a little bit different than the personal property side of it. But I think we're, you know, you sort of can, you know, go a little bit into the weeds here on what-if scenarios. So I think we're just sort of overthinking this. Thank you.
Councilmember Kessina?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I should point out, and I hope it's evident, that it's not a trust issue for the city employees. It's just a perception issue. But I do appreciate everyone's comments. I think that's the benefit of having a group to provide different opinions, differing opinions. So, yeah, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Twate, I see your hands up. Jeff, are you on?
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. So I just wanted to get some context here, I guess. I was down in my basement, and all of a sudden, my feet started going bad. So I'm going to walk out into my front steps here. So as a planning and zoning commissioner, which I've been for 20 years or so, and for half of that, I've been paid a $100 a month stipend, am I eligible to bid on land in a, in a capacity with the city? Or does that eliminate me from doing that?
Okay, you're cutting out a little bit there, Mr. Twate, but I think we've got it. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bloom to answer that question, based on the existing code and the promulgated code.
Thank you, Commissioner Twate. Technically, under the existing code and the promulgated code, planning and zoning commissioners and council members, the city attorney, city manager, and city clerk are unable to acquire property owned by the city.
So even, so with our land management plan that we had put in place a couple of years ago, where they identified land, and I've looked at trying to purchase those in the past, and I've never been told I couldn't. But now I'm being told I cannot. And so if that's the case, which, if that's, if that's how it reads, that's how it reads. But if I wanted to have, say, my brothers, my sister-in-law, my brother's wife purchase it for me, that to me seems like it shows a larger, you know, appearance of impropriety than if I was just going to try to purchase this at a fair market price and outbid anybody else that might be trying to purchase it. So I think there's more work that should be done on this because we have invested our time in the city. And like Councilmember Daughthett said, I would rather build or try to develop something here in this town than I would Soldatna or somewhere out in the borough. And so it feels like, and maybe I'm being, you know, kind of selfish on this thing, but for $100 a month that I sit here and donate my time to the city to be penalized for it, it seems like there should be some sort of compromise that can be worked out in this. I just, to me, it just seems like we're penalizing the people that care about this city more than we would anybody else.
So, Mr. Twate, if this fails, it'll be still the same situation as if it passed, as far as a planning and zoning commissioner like yourself. So did you have a suggestion?
Well, well, you know, like I said, I've tried when Mr. Osterlander was city manager to try to purchase some property, and I was never told I couldn't do it. So now, all of a sudden, I see that that's not an option. And so to me, it seems like, I understand, like, the good old boy thing where it's a couple of vehicles that the city has that they're going to hand off to an employee because, you know, hey, this is a truck that hasn't had many miles on it, something like that. But if you're putting your self out there for a fair market value on a piece of property, and you're competing with everybody else, to me, whoever bids the most money should be able to get that. I don't, I don't think that we should penalize city employees or city planning and zoning commissioner members, or council members for that matter. I understand the appearance of the impropriety. But how far away do we have to put this arm's length thing before, you know, like I said, I could get my daughter's cousin's brother to give it to me, you know, or to purchase it for me. And I think that looks worse when it's all said and done. So I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. But I think it's unfair to penalize the people that have lived here and are dedicating their most time here. So.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Twate. Mr. Daughthett?
So I guess, just, it might be for Mr. Twate, just for clarification, you're not opposed to what we're presenting here tonight, but you'd like to see it get more liberalized, is what I'm hearing. You're not opposed to what's happening now, but you'd like to see it be more liberalized?
You know, I would hate to go on the record and say more liberalized for anything, but you might be right.
If I'm not mistaken, that's where we were two weeks ago, and then we're to where we are now.
I was just looking for clarification. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Naxted. So two weeks ago, when we discussed this and this was presented, I was very uncomfortable with the way it was written. But with the changes to the substitute amendment, I feel like it's given it some definite sideboards. It makes it a lot more palatable. And I think we are doing a good thing for the city employees. But I'm okay with the ban on the municipal officers. I think that needs to be in place for certain reasons. And I agree that we could sit here and come up with infinite scenarios of unethical situations. To borrow Mr. Bloom's sentence, we can't legislate ethics. We do need to have faith in our administration and our people that we have now. And I would hope that if somebody did something, again, and this has already been said, that they would be dealt with severely in some way, shape, or form. But I can see this being a good thing for most of the city employees, people that love the city, people that want to live here, people that have invested most of their work life here. So for me, the changes to this substitute amendment are much more positive than it was two weeks ago.
Any further questions, comments?
Councilmember Naxted, before we vote on this, I just want to make sure, let's go just back a little bit. The substitute was moved and seconded, but was unanimous request consent requested on the substitute?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Thank you. So that we do properly now have the substitute as amended before us?
That's correct. And thank you. I was going to ask that question, make sure we were supposed to be. So we have that before us. So if there, are there any further comments? I would ask for the, ask for the call.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Daughthett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kessina?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have item H7, action approval, extension to memorandum of understanding with the Kenai Historical Society brought to us by administration, pleasure of council. Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Moved to approve the extension to the understanding with the Kenai Historical Society.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City manager, you want to give us a breakdown on this?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. So we have an agreement with the Kenai Historical Society, who's entered into June 1, 2020, runs through the end of this month, May 30. Actually, not quite the end.
Yep.
You might want to silence your phone.
All right. So it runs through not quite the end of this month because it goes to May 30 of 2025. It does allow for extension by mutual consent. Basically, what this memorandum does is it's an agreement between the city and the historical society regarding the historic Cabin Park in Old Town Kenai, where the historic society is responsible for, has primary responsibility for maintaining, preserving, and providing guided tours at this historic cabin park, requires that the historic society and the city work cooperatively to address needed improvements, repair, and maintenance, and that the historic society will provide utilities for the historic cabin park. And what's the last one here? At that, the historic cabin park will be reasonably open to the public without discrimination subject to laws and ordinances of the City of Kenai. So this is just our working agreement with the historic society about the management of the Old Town Cabin Park. And we're looking to extend that for another five years with council's approval.
Thank you, city manager. Ubank, any questions to the city manager? Was unanimous consent requested?
Just have a real quick question. So make sure, I know there's not going to be a financial gain or anything, but I don't know if there are members on this body that are part of that board. Should they vote on this? I don't know how that works.
Thank you. Yes. No, no council member should be on both sides of a deal. So whether they have a financial interest or not, I think the general position is you shouldn't be on, have positions on two boards, on two sides of the agreement.
Okay, well, that would be two members of council then. Myself, I'm on the Historical Society Board.
Yep. Then you probably should not be voting on an agreement with the Historical Society.
Okay.
Actually, you shouldn't. I'll be definitive.
Then I'll recuse myself from that. Councilmember Askin?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I too will recuse myself from this vote as I'm on the board of the Historical Society.
Thank you, Councilmember Daughthett. I thought about it earlier, but since there was no financial.
And I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Naxted, you should probably pass the gavel and let somebody else take care of this matter.
I'll pass it to Councilmember Sonar. Not that far of a throw.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Naxted. Okay, so for the rest of us that are not on the other board, any calls for unanimous consent?
I will call for unanimous consent.
Okay, are there any objections to unanimous consent? Okay, unanimous consented is.
Thank you for that, guys.
Okay.
This should bring us to item H8, and I'm going to pass.
You can send it back if you like.
I am sending the gavel back to Vice Mayor Naxted.
All right. So that brings us down to, brings us down to item H8. This was the late items that we, that we received, scheduling a board of adjustment appeal. We have a calendar here. And I think we ought to start with asking administration when they might be able to get us the packet of information. And then we can kind of project from there how much time we need, and then a date, perhaps. City manager, you don't want to pick a date too early.
Right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Kevin, do you, you're going to be putting most of it together, man.
Thank you, Mr. Ubank, members of council. I will say there's some, we just lost one staff member in planning and zoning, and the clerk's office is also going to have some personnel turnover. So we, it may take a little bit longer than it normally does. I would advocate later in June, possibly even early July, to meet the requirements and to give us enough time to get the entire packet together.
Well, the 45 days runs out on July 4, correct?
That's correct, although pursuant to code, it can be extended to Monday, July 7, due to the holiday.
So we would probably need a few days, or it'd be nice to have five days at least to be able to review the packets. We could probably do it in less time.
If body wouldn't be opposed, possibly the, before the council meeting on July 2, might give us the most amount of time. But we could also move that forward if the body would like us to go a little bit faster. Most of the documentation is there, just making sure we have everything that's needed according to code.
Question of the attorney, perhaps the clerk, is that sufficient reason to go beyond the 45 days?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Naxted. So in the past, we have held that just general availability of board members and that sort of thing is good cause to hold it later. I think personnel issues certainly is good cause if that's what you guys feel like you need to do. I don't know, I haven't had any contact with the applicant or involvement in this case. I don't know if they have any deadlines that would, I don't know if they're trying to get construction done this year or not. I don't have any idea on that. Otherwise, I would say it's, if they're not trying to get construction done this year, then there's probably not a big rush.
Okay, I understand July 1, we could have, have the packet. Is that what I'm understanding?
We could have the packet before that. My suggestion was the potentially having the hearing prior to the council meeting on July 2.
I got you. I misunderstood. Because I was looking for when the packet might be available. So you could have the packet available to us five or seven days before that?
Correct. Yes, we would, you'd have plenty of time to review.
Okay, council, councilmember Sonar.
Okay, I'm just thinking back to previous BOAs, board of adjustments, and some of them ran two to three hours. So I don't know if we could have it prior to a council meeting.
Unless we came in earlier, or we came in on the 1st, which is a Tuesday. Councilmember Dothet?
Or we would schedule it after, but we don't really know what our load would be on that meeting, that's the only thing. We could put it on the agenda for after the meeting on the 2nd, just a little bit later, I don't know.
Thank you, I, sorry, I think Terry was probably about to jump in, but I beat him. We only have one council meeting in July, so often it is a heavy agenda, I think.
We're looking to maybe move it up one day, would that, to have a separate meeting prior to our council meeting, that, what we're, is that what I got from Sonar?
Well, you know, I would suggest if we were going to do it on our council meeting, we'd do it before, frankly, in three hours or so before. City manager, do you have an opinion on that, since I don't know anything about the situation?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't have any objection. I would recommend, like you said, starting potentially 1:00 in the afternoon, 2:00 in the afternoon for the hearing, to make sure, if you're going to do it on the same day as a council meeting, if you want to schedule an alternate day, we can accommodate with council. I think we're just looking for, you know, late June for the, after final preparation and distribution of that packet, so whatever we can do along there, whatever day council wants to meet on is council's pleasure, we'll be here for it.
Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. What if we did it on the 16th of July, since we don't, we normally have a council meeting that night, but we don't because it's July, and we could just take that evening? I mean, I don't know, just a thought, it's already planned.
I know what you're going to say there.
There's a lot going on in the last two weeks of July, so if we could do it before, that would be amazing.
Yeah, I'd prefer to do it earlier in July, if we're going to do it in July, like the 2nd, and knock it, you know, out before our meeting, and the city manager suggested perhaps 2:00 in the afternoon for a start, and then we do that, then obviously there'd be a break, I think. But-
I would be good with that.
Just a quick, just a quick question for Mr. Bloom. Who would, who would, would be representing council? We're not looking at outside council, are we here?
No, I'll be representing council. I have had no contact with anybody in the planning department on this matter, they've done it completely independently, and I think they would continue to do that, and I would represent the board.
Thank you.
So does that meet everybody's calendar?
What are we proposing, to be clear? July 2?
July 2 at 2.
At 2, yeah, that works.
Okay. Councilmember Askin?
Yes, that works.
Oh, good. Okay, well, it sounds like we're all, we're all good for 2:00 on the 2nd. Got that? Okay, moving on, that gets us to commission reports. Council on Aging, I have no report. Their next meeting is June 12. And Airport Commission, Commissioner Daniel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, so Airport Commission met on the 8th, and it was actually a fairly quick meeting. Couple routine things, recommended to renew the A Team agreement, and also the Janitorial Services, which is the same company they have now, which has been doing a great job. Other things to note, dates coming up in June, the airfare is the 14th, and Lou Gehrig starts flying on the 6th of June, and then the Part 139 inspection took place. And their next meeting is in June on the 12th.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have Harbor Commission, Cassena?
Well, thank you. Yeah, there was no Harbor Commission meeting since council last met, but our next meeting is scheduled for June 9 at 6:00 p.m.
Okay. Parks and Rec, councilmember Dothet. I didn't forget you this time.
We didn't have a meeting, but we have a coming on the 5th, which will be our next Parks and Rec Commission meeting.
Good, thank you very much. Planning and zoning, councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nexted. Okay, I was at the planning and zoning meeting, and they passed resolution PZ 2025-19. This was recommending approval of the preliminary plat of Kenai Meadows Edition Number 2, which is a subdivision of Track A with lots 3 and 4, Kenai Meadows Edition Number 1 in the rural residential zoning district. Okay, that passed easy. Okay, the next one, the resolution PZ 2025-17, is why we're having the upcoming BOA. So here it is. Granting a conditional use permit to develop and operate an 82-unit indoor heated storage facility on the property described as Lot 1, Block 2 of Momson's Sub Replat, additional number 1, addition number 2, located at 1,001, 3rd Street in the urban residential zoning district. There were two amendments to this resolution. The first amendment was to put site obscuring fencing down 3rd Street. The other amendment was to contain the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Okay, those two amendments were agreed upon. The vote was taken. There were six commissioners present. Three voted no, three voted yes. So therefore, the motion failed with no majority. There was one commissioner absent. So it was a 3-3 vote, and I learned that that fails.
That's your report?
That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Beautification Commission, Daniel, Commissioner Daniel.
Oh, yes, that was me as well. Couple things that were discussed at the last meeting that were big. They reviewed the 2024 goals, the work goals, and the winter tour was a new one, that was a big hit, and that they're going to do that again. They also had, they renewed goals for this year as well, the Parks and Garden Tour, discussion on the fountain and what to do with that, also a hot topic in the Leif Hansen Park there. And then a new one as well, the citywide murals, that's an interesting one, looking to get some input with the Kenai Arts there, to try to get some murals going for the 2025 goals. Oh, and the banners, the static displays, that's another one to look at refreshing those for the, in the upcoming year, so more to come on those. They're very, those are all very exciting for us, and this is not a calendar. Oh, my calendar is, there it is, I'm not prepared here. Kind of is, it is a calendar, you're right, for the art center.
I apologize.
Let's see here, beautification, I'm not used to beautification in a while, it's in September, that's why I thought September the 9th, when they meet again.
Okay, thank you, and I'm a proponent for murals as well. Okay, that gets us to item J, reported the mayor. Did I miss somebody? Nope. Mayor Gabriel?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple things. First of all, I, as you all know, our assistant deputy clerk is, last day will be Friday this week, and I just wanted to say thank you to Megan for your service to the city and your calmness and, you know, your dislevel-headedness when you, when you're, you know, every interaction I've had with you, you've been very pleasant to deal with and enjoyed that about you, and wish you luck in your, in your future. And then, moving on, we have next Monday, this next Monday is Memorial Day, so good idea to take a moment to, you know, understand and realize the freedoms that we enjoy and how we, how we got those, and the sacrifices that it took to get those. We all know that freedom is not free, and I certainly am appreciative of the sacrifices made by others, so I can enjoy the life I have. And other than that, I look forward to seeing everybody in person at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So that brings us to administrative reports. City manager, Ubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Vice Mayor, members of council, just a couple things to report here. I want to start off by giving a couple shout-outs to some of our city employees. One of our police officers, Officer Megan Williams, has been recognized by the University of Alaska Fairbanks as a 2024-2025 Outstanding Graduate Student for the Department of Justice. She is working on her master's, I believe, there with UAF. She's been with the department for 14 years, so she's doing her master's degree while she's also a full-time officer, and she's recently taken a new role within the department on the local drug task force. So I think she's doing some really great things, I want to congratulate her on that recognition by the university. The city's fire marshal, Mr. Jeremy Hamilton, he recently received his Associate Degree in Fire Science, so I want to say congratulations to Jeremy. You know, I think it's extra special when these folks are working full-time, doing jobs, and, you know, have families and careers and everything, to be able to go back to school and be committed to do that, so I just want to recognize those efforts. I don't know if you've seen, but the Public Works Department is posting regular updates on the Bluff Erosion Project on the city's website there. The first barges entered the river on the 16th and 17th. 16th on the evening tide, I believe, the work barge rolled in, and on the 17th, the first barge of rock came in. That barge is now empty, it's been completely offloaded. I think they're expecting potentially by, I haven't confirmed this yet, but by Saturday, the second barge would be here, and they'll be switching the two barges out, the empty one will be headed back to Sandpoint to pick up additional rocks. So that project is underway. I am regretful to announce, one of our other police officers, Officer Josh Hall, he's been with the department eight years now, is leaving the department, so we have a vacancy there. We're also recruiting for a part-time administrative assistant in the planning department. We will soon be recruiting for an admin in the clerk's office. We have a rec center attendant position that we're recruiting for, and we are now finalizing the rest of our summer hires, we're in the end of that process. So a little bit of stuff still going on recruitment-wise. The city slash disposal site, this is a site where residents, or even non-residents, the public can dispose of, tree slash, will open on May 29. Four days a week, Thursday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This is located out next to the soccer fields on your way out of town out there, there's some, should be some signage on the side of the road, so hopefully people can dispose of that slash and continue removing some of these fruit park beetle trees that are so dangerous around here. In the Parks and Rec Department, the annual Kenai Kite Festival is scheduled for Saturday, May 31, noon to 3:00 p.m. in Millennium Square. It's a family-friendly event with professional kite demonstrations by the Alaska Kiteers Group, a build-a-kite station, field games, frozen treats, and music. The kite festival is made possible by volunteers and contributions and community partnerships, so I think, hopefully, everybody comes out for that. On that same day, Parks and Rec will also be hosting the Annual Community Plant Day. That will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Folks are going to meet here at Kenai City Hall, they're going to do some planning, and they're going to come back and have a barbecue provided to those who volunteer by the Kenai Fire Department. So anybody in the public would like to come out and plant some flowers and help out in the city, it's a great opportunity there. The upcoming Kenai Animal Shelter Annual Family, Annual Animal Fair will also take place on Saturday, June 14, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Kenai Green Strip. This is where people can bring their pets, they get pet care tips, live demonstrations, connect with other pet owners and other local resources. Last couple of things, you know, the budget was introduced this evening, adoption is scheduled at the June 4 meeting. I just want to extend again to council, you know, if you have any questions, or if you're considering any amendments you'd like to make, we'd like to extend the assistance for that, to make the evening of the 4th go really smoothly, so reach out to myself or Finance Director, and we can help you work through any potential amendments that you're considering. And believe it or not, departments are looking ahead to DIPnet, and we're starting to be, we're actively preparing for that, it'll start June 10, or I'm sorry, July 10. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for the city manager?
I have, I have one, or if you want to elaborate, if there's anything to, but I read an article this afternoon that our police, in conjunction with the troopers and whatnot, were able to arrest, I think, four people, maybe five, in a retail store here. I think they were, they were unrelated, maybe the same day, it was pretty, you know, but they're cracking down on shoplifting, and they were able to accommodate that. So is this something our police are going to be working on, you know, at some of the other stores around here? Because I understand the shoplifting has been pretty awful.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. You're obviously more aware of what's going on than I am, so I haven't actually got that report, but I would say our police are actively, you know, always working, especially cooperatively with our stores here in Kenai, trying to alleviate those problems, so I'm not aware of the specific story you're talking about, but I think it's just business as usual for them over there, so.
Much appreciated, thank you. Attorney Bloom?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nexted. I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Bloom? Seeing none, that gets us to our assistant clerk. Megan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nexted. I have no report, but I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. So that gets us to additional public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the council at this time? Okay, well, seeing none. That gets us to council comments. Mayor Gabriel online here, are you still there?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to say thanks again to everybody and your work, but I look forward to seeing you here soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Askin?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Megan, I will miss you. I appreciate your service to the city and your calm demeanor, you are always so unflappable. I'm going to miss you, thank you. Phil, thank you for filling in for the beautification committee, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to rowboat in. I got to attend my daughter's master's graduation, as well as our son-in-law graduated also. Good discussions tonight. Congratulations to Jeremy and Megan. Well done. Having watched my daughter get her master's working full-time, it's a lot of work. I regret not being able to attend the Memorial Day program this year in Kenai. I hope to be able to catch some of that down here while I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on those two graduates.
Thanks.
Councilmember Dothet?
Yeah, just a few things, been, as I think we were talking briefly before the meeting, Ms. Sonar reiterated the insane last few weeks of school have been happening, and when you have four children in school at the same time, and three different schools, it's a lot going on, and I can't even imagine what the teachers have to go through keeping through this last few weeks. But I just wanted to give a shout-out. We went and attended sixth-grade camp, I was voluntold to be a volunteer, and so I went to sixth-grade camp, and it was, it was a pretty amazing camp they put out through KMS up at Victory Bible Camp. 100 and some odd kids running around being crazy for three days, just keeping the chaos at a minimum, and what those teachers do is pretty amazing. And I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Mr. Newton and Mr. Carson. They had a student who has a medical condition, makes it really difficult to walk. He gets around, but, you know, if he gets bumped, he can't hike a mountain. And they had a special cart, wheelchair-type, all-terrain cart that they brought up to that camp, and they put him in it, and Mr. Carson, Mr. Newton pushed him up a hill that's about the equivalent of, I would say, hiking Skyline, and got him all the way to the top of Skyline so he could hike and be up on the mountain with those other kids. And then- with those other kids. And then, they also took and pushed that cart all the way out onto the glacier, so he could get out there and walk on the glacier with those, with the rest of his class. And it was a pretty special moment to see. They definitely went above and beyond, and they had already hiked that trail once that day. So, they hiked it twice, and the second time, they pushed and pulled that cart all the way to the top. And so, that was pretty awesome to see. It just is a huge shout-out to the staff we have at our local schools, and, and what they do, and how much they do that goes unrecognized. And I just want to say thanks to all the teachers that do that. Also, it was graduation, we had an amazing graduation ceremony for Kenai Central High School. My wife's down at Homer High School graduation right now. It's really awesome to see all those kids, and watching them go all the way from kindergarten all the way up and moving through, because my son graduated, my oldest graduated yesterday, and it's pretty wild to see that happen, and realize that they're moving on. But, seeing some of those kids and what their future plans are, you know, it's really, it reiterates that, you know, I think we're gonna be in a good place. We've got some great kids coming through our local school systems, and I look forward to having them, hopefully, maybe as some of them as employees soon, and, and moving on into their future endeavors. Went on to shout-out to our staff here at the city for the dugout project. I know it was pretty heated there for a little while, but they got it done in the nick of time, and they've got two dugouts pretty well wrapped up, and they were just over there today, and they got two more that are getting close to being wrapped up, and they're doing a lot of work over there, and they're turning out really nice. So, thank you for Parks and Rec, and Public Works, and whoever else has been working on that, and city staff for making that happen and come to fruition. It's great to see those really getting spurheaded by the staff to make it come in within budget, and doing what we can with the money we had available. And then, one last thing, just thanks to everybody on this board, it was great discussions. We got some stuff accomplished tonight, that I think would be a really good benefit to our city employees, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been Rep. Tanner.
All right, so, for Connections Homeschool, May 22nd, tomorrow is the graduation ceremony. For Kenai Alternative High School, May 22nd is the last day of school, and May 23rd is the end of any new student application interviews. For Kenai Central High School, May 22nd is the last day of school. May 22nd is the girls and boys JV and varsity soccer at Soldana High School, co-ed JV and varsity baseball versus Houston High School, and girls JV and varsity softball versus Houston High School. May 23rd is co-ed junior varsity and varsity baseball versus Palmer High School, and girls junior varsity and varsity softball versus Palmer High School. May 23rd through 24th is the track regional tournament at Service High. The 24th is girls varsity softball versus Kodiak High School. 24th is also girls and boys junior varsity and varsity soccer versus Palmer High School, and co-ed junior varsity and varsity baseball versus Reddington High School. The 29th through the 31st of May is the soccer state championships at Colony, Palmer, and Wasilla High Schools, and the 29th is the softball regional tournament.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, nexted. So, I got to attend the Boys and Girls Club opening, and I think it was just, what, two springs ago, maybe three springs ago, that we donated the land to them, and I think this whole project has come together really fast, and it's, it's a beautiful facility of which we can all be very proud to be a part of, and I think it's going to do great things for the city of Kenai here. I would like to thank our deputy clerk, Megan, for her service to council and to the city, and thank you for all the patience when I come down with questions and asks. You're always very kind and very patient dealing with us, so thank you. I will miss you. I too would like to give a shout-out to Public Works and Parks and Rec. Thank you, thank you, thank you for getting those dugouts done, I mean, bringing it on time, bringing it in under budget. I hope that, I hope the community recognizes how hard that you guys have worked to get this done, but I want you to know that we certainly have recognized it. And last but not least, I would like to congratulate our student representative, Chayling, over here, who played beautifully on his trumpet solo on Sunday at his spring recital.
Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Man, there's a lot going on. Yes, I too just want to echo comments I already made. We'll miss you, Megan, thank you for your time here, I hope you're moving on to some exciting new adventure, so, and thank you, staff, for getting those dugouts done, that was a huge, huge deal. Also, echo Councilmember Dothitt with the sixth grade camp, we have some amazing staff members in this school system. KMS, you know, especially, my kids are in it right now, and going from camp to mini courses, and it takes a lot, and so I would encourage all of you, if you've had a chance, to volunteer in a local school here, it's definitely an experience, we'll call it that. Speaking of volunteering, I'll be at Mountain View tomorrow doing their end-of-school barbecue. It's hard to mess up hot dogs, they keep calming back every year, so, you know, and we'll see. So, anyways, lots of stuff going on in the year. Oh, and if you haven't had a chance, do take a look at the, it's wild seeing those barges out there with those rocks and the materials to build that wall, it's finally happening, it's pretty cool to see. So, got a couple pictures, like, hey, this is awesome. Anyways, that's all I have, everybody have a wonderful night.
Councilmember Cassina?
You know, I'm really gonna advocate that Phil and I get to go first at one time, you know, so we don't have to just say ditto every time.
Hear that, Mayor?
You know, I'm only saying it because he's not here.
Sometimes he mixes it up, and you'll do that, you won't be ready.
I did want to recognize Director Bass for his work on the dugouts, I got some texts and some emails about that, and there were some dugouts being built as I drove here. So, they look great. Also, got a couple other emails in the city council inbox, I suspect other folks did as well, but wanted to recognize staff for their efforts to keep our city trails, streets, and lands clean and safe. Recognize Chief Ross, Director Frye, or anyone else who helped reduce traffic hazards on Lawton with speed signs. Obviously, big shout-out to Megan, thank you very much. Yeah, I don't know that I would have figured out how to run for council without your help, so, thank you, and maybe sorry to everyone else. Also, big thank you to whoever put up the nets on the girls softball fields, at the little league fields. We had a parents' first kids' game Friday, and despite my best efforts to hit a window at the Boys and Girls Club, that net stopped every one of them, so, it works. And then, I think that's it for me, that was it.
Good work on the city's part. Megan, gonna miss you, I know you're gonna be around and all of that. It's definitely our loss and somebody else's gain, and you're always, you're always a nice smiling face down here, very competent here at council and at the other commission meetings and whatnot. You did a very good job, you're, you're a quick learner, and, and you got, you got the personality for it, and I appreciate you. On May 9th, I attended a ribbon cutting at the new improved Kenai Inn, which is part of Kenai Catering, it's the same building. It used to be, to me, it's a Sheffield house, but it's been like three different things since then, so I don't remember what the last one was. But, anyway, probably the biggest rooms in the city of Kenai. It's an older building, but it's, they've done some nice renovations in there and everything, and they tell me that it's competitive, and so, I don't know what the rates are. But, if you have folks coming into town, there we go, and thanks, Sam, she invited me for that, and I enjoyed that. On the, on the 17th, I attended the ribbon cutting at the Boys and Girls Club, and all of that, and although they were there, they also had some nice awards and all that, and I accepted for the city a nice little, it's not a plaque, trophy, whatever, for our donation and our involvement with, with, for the Boys and Girls Club, they're very appreciative. There were some other major donors like ourselves, more cash-wise, but anyway, I'm gonna give this to the city manager, and you can pass it around, I suppose, but they, they, they were quite appreciative, and, and so that building is, is near completion, it looks to be complete anyway, but then, the, the addition, there's another building that's being completed too, that's, that'll be done in August, so there'll be another grand opening for that. And I too watched the, the barges come in, I felt like a kid standing on the beach, because I kind of knew the time, and I could see them outside the river at mid-tide, and I knew they're gonna come in at high tide, and I kept going back and all of that, and it's, it's really cool. So, a lot of the naysayers that said it would never happen, well, it's happening, so, there we go. And after 30, 40 years of not happening, I can't, I can't blame them. So, that's all I have. So, with no further business before the body, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.